Yeah, run electric, electric, uh, put in solution, electric, run electricity through it and digest it. In fact, when we ran into COVID, when it first started, you know, with bleach and that stuff was at a premium, um, we, we just called the Utah. And when they hear it on next Wednesday, so. I'm not known for my.
I'd like to call the, um, we are in the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting, and I'd like to call to order this meeting at 5:32. Will the Parks and Rec, Rec, Reations Director please call the role?
Via. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Dutiel?
Here.
Delker? And Badla?
Present. Item two, the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
May I have a second? Or is there, is there any objection to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. This is our time to have scheduled public comments and presentations, and there are none.
Oh, this is Joe Cashai. Correct. It would be at the Chair's prerogative, yes, Paul, for timeliness? I'm thinking it's your prerogative.
I would like to allow it then. So, you ready to present?
We are. Hi, I'm Joe Cashai. Most of you obviously know me. I was president of Soldatna Rotary Club, and with me is Cam Choi, who's the Art Professor of Kennebden and Soul College, and another Soldatna Rotarian. This is purely information, we're not asking for approvals. We just want to throw a concept out at you that Soldatna Rotary is thinking of doing in conjunction perhaps with the Soldatna Chamber of Commerce, at least one bank, and that is, that is the equivalent of something similar to the salmon sculpture that's on the, one of the roofs of the hospital, but in Soldatna Creek Park. And Professor Choi has some examples here. I need to explain that the one, the top part, and this is purely an informational thing at this point. And I'll just explain. The top one is the existing salmon sculpture at the hospital, which is articulated, and which swings in the wind. The next piece is the idea, the idea for this one here, which is suggested for Soldatna Creek Park. Now, please understand, the black and white ones are not to scale. They're about three times bigger, or four times bigger than what's actually being suggested. It just.
I think it's wishful thinking on my part.
I'm not a master of Photoshop, so I take responsibility. Anyway, these are definitely out of scale. They're not huge looming things. What the idea is, is essentially, and then I'll just mention it, and then I'll get out of the way for Professor Choi, the idea is that we're suggesting on that mound at Soldatna Creek Park, the equivalent of not a weathervein, but a season vein, where basically, as we know, the prevailing, the prevailing winds in the summer from the southwest, and in the winter are from the northeast. And we're thinking of something that would be kind of like, would be a salmon of sorts, which would have interplay, I'll let Cam describe that, which would have interplay, and which would basically, when it swings to the summer prevailing wind, it would basically look like a summertime blueback salmon, maybe, and that's the current thought. And when it, when it swings to the wintertime northeast wind, it would look like a spawning salmon. And essentially be, essentially it would be a sa, a seasonal vein, if you will. I, we're thinking of the area, you know, the mound in Soldatna Creek Park, which I measured it, it measures roughly 50 feet by 45 feet, and. And we're thinking of something on the order of perhaps, you know, 12 feet. In other words, not something massive and looming, but big enough to make a difference. The alternative might be out toward the highway, where it could be a very obvious and convenient, I'll meet you behind the salmon weathervein, or the salmon season vein, if you will, on the part of the highway, as a, as an entree to Soldatna Creek Park. Anyway, as I say, we're a little just throwing the idea out now, we're not asking for approval, we're certainly not asking for money. We just kind of want some people's reactions before we apply for a Rotary district-wide grant to do it, and try to raise some other money. We're talking to one of the banks that has some interest as well. So this is purely informational, and I've talked more than enough. I can leave my extra copy here for somebody, if there's not a complete one.
Yes.
Yes.
Where's, where's the one on top, which, on top of which other hospital buildings is it?
This is Central Peninsular Hospital.
Okay.
It's, let's see, off of Marydale, Driving In. It's on the second, second story landing.
Oh, okay.
Which is where the intensive care units are, that basically bring that exterior roof.
Okay, so the roof courtyard where people can go in.
You have to be up on the second floor to be able to see it.
Oh, okay. Is it, do people walk out and around that, or is that just the roof? I mean, like, do, I mean, or do people wander around on the paths and so?
It's inaccessible.
It inaccessible or accessible?
Right, inaccessible.
Okay.
And where the hospital sit, it doesn't have a good wind flow either.
Okay.
What's being thought about here is something up at least eight feet above, so that it wouldn't bump into people or cause, you know, cause any physical safety or interference issues. But, you know, those are things to be worked out, but we're aware of that issue.
That was my question, is how far off the ground would it be?
Eight to 10 feet.
Eight to 10 feet? Could it be higher?
Sure, yes.
This, Mayor Whitney, this is in the conceptual phase at this point. Certainly, you know, we would adapt it, being a personal injury where I'm very sensitive to those things, and we don't want anybody hurt, or bumped into it, or get up and try to damage it, or vandalize, or anything else like that. I would say, by the way, just one aside, you know, Rotary, as you know, put in that art park over by the pavilion, and then the murals, we put in a number of various commissioned art pieces there, or display areas, and in the six years I've been there, we've never had the slightest degree of vandalism, except for the occasional person thought, boy, what a great place to slap my concert poster, slap in the middle, I have to go in and peel it off, and get some goo gone, and get rid of the.
I had a conversation with them.
What?
I had a conversation.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Them, though, with the tape, as well as the ones that came through in the wood and the staples, so I reached out to those folks.
I appreciate that, because it saved, saved me a bottle of goo gone.
So, you're looking at possibly getting a grant from Rotary?
Yes.
And then, Cam, you develop it? Would you have students help you, or would you just do it on your own?
Primarily on my own.
Primarily on your own?
It would be with the, with KPC's assistance, using the 3D sculpture studio as the place to build it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions, Mr. Mayor Whitney?
How long?
What's the length of it?
We're anticipating 12 feet.
I'm sorry?
12 feet.
12 feet.
You know, Mayor Whitney, that would be about one-fourth of the width or, or length of that mound, based upon my rough measurements with the tape before the weather got coming. So, it'd be about a fourth of the width or length.
Now, will this move, would this move with the wind?
Yes.
So it's not stationary in one direction at all times? Thank you.
And there, other areas could be considered within the park, not necessarily the mound, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
The mound was my suggestion, and it was just the first thought, because in some ways it is the least visually obtrusive area, you know, down by the river, you know, the bank, the river is growing in anyway, probably needs to be cleared off, just so that people can still see the river in three years. But I was, we were trying to find a place that wasn't too visually obtrusive.
Thank you. I, kids who like to roll down their hill.
This wouldn't, this wouldn't interfere with that at all, Ms. Badla.
So this is the mound that's near the Iron Mike?
Yeah.
That's usually where we put the Christmas tree, but I'm not poo-pooing, I mean, I headed on a poo-poo statement. I have this vision of whether or not we could decorate the base to look like a Christmas tree, and then have a Christmas fish and tree.
I like it.
I don't know whether that's, I'm out to lunch or not, but that way it killed two birds with one stone, I don't know. It's always been my dream to have some baked salmon in there, because that's.
Really?
Means important, but my idea was a 40-foot topiary that you then change colors as the salmon season went on, but those things are, you have to keep them indoors during the winter.
This says we've managed without requiring upkeep.
Yeah.
When it's, you know, when it's basically patented copper, and powder coated aluminum and steel, there's no upkeep, which is the nice part about it.
Yeah.
What is the timeline?
We're looking, we're, not this year, but we would look at submitting for a Rotary grant in about a year and six months. Rotary grant times happen in April of each year. It's too early for this coming time, and the incoming Soldatna Rotary President has some child and Rotary handicapped fishing park specific refurbishment in mind as a project. We're thinking more like the following year, when Mike Dye, who's President, the Vice President here of Northern Bank, would be the incoming President. And Mike's always expressed a definite interest in the arts as well. So we're looking at applying for a grant in a year and six months or so.
About 2023, though.
I'm sorry?
2023.
Yes, sir, about, applying for a grant April of 2023, district grants are payable, are payable usually in July, and then, of course, there'll be the implementation time.
Thank you.
This is just intent to provide, you know, to provide some information, and to just, you know, see if people had a comment. We wouldn't want to go into a grant, application or fundraising without understanding that this was something the city would appreciate and find useful to have. And that's why we're here tonight.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for showing up tonight and presenting, and I know how hard you work, that's why I decided to have you go early, because I know you, you probably need to teach tomorrow. Yeah, you bet, thank you.
Thank you very much for your courtesy, Madam Chairman.
Are you the gentleman that made the moose out of the college?
No, that's Paul Turnout.
Oh, okay. Those are magnificent.
That was, that was a while ago. Paul's working oilfield now.
Oh, okay.
I think he's a welder, actually, out in the oilfields.
Yeah, well, you don't build something like that without.
He what?
He's in Wisconsin.
He's in Wisconsin now? Okay.
Let's see, yeah, this is, yeah.
Well, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to mention that Mr. Jim Delker just came from work, and so he is here at 5:45. Thank you.
Apologize for my tardiness, thank you.
Is this to number five? That moves us to number five, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director.
Please, let me just let me know that Annette got disconnected. She had texted me that she had, so, but she's, yeah, she's having trouble getting connected back. I'm able to text her.
Penny, did we do approval of the minutes?
I'm here.
No, no, approve the minutes. I will do that now, thank you very much. I'm going to go back to item three, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the August 5, 2021 minutes?
Sure, I will make the motion to approve the minutes of August 5, 2021.
Second?
Second.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Thank you, and I apologize.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Annette, for reconnecting you. So that brings us to number five.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec Director. Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you. Start out, there's a, you have a memo in your packet. There are some changes, we refined it. When the packet deadline, we were still working the numbers, and they were close, but not exact, but we have refined them since, and actually, it's better news than even what's in the memo. We start talking about, looking at last summer, the, the extra red run definitely helped in terms of those things, and we were up 21% this year over last year's campground revenues in the campgrounds. It was, so we look back and go, huh, I guess that's why we were pooped at the end of it, why we were tired. But it's exciting to know that we were that, you know, people were headed here for so much longer. The extra time when the reds were showing up were, it was definitely a boost in that it stretched our season all the way out into the middle to third week of August this year, as opposed to all the, most people leaving after the, in the first week of August, so that made a big deal. Our, the metric we use for why, who, what, where, and why, in terms of this, we're actually lean on Rotary as an indication of why they're here a lot of times, in that 99% of the fishing at Rotary is for Sauk eyes. So, in terms of that, so, with a, last year we were 15-6 in Rotary, and this year, or 19 last year, and we were 28 this year. So that's a pretty good jump, just in that one park alone. That's the highest we've ever been in Rotary. Within the overall park, we, we hosted 13, over 13,000 camp nights, which is the first time we've ever broke 13,000 in terms of those things. When we, there's an additional memo that'll be going to the council through the city manager, and that the, the, when we, we did a study in 2002, 2016, where we had put, hired a couple interns, and they went through a survey with folks, boots on the field, talking to people in Swiftwater and Centennial, as well as the festival, we got some input from there, too. And from what the people, the, I think it was 225, 250 people that were surveyed, what we found, that the average party was 3.34 people per night staying in a campground, and the average spending was $118.90 a night, or per day, per person, when they're in town. So when we start looking at these numbers at 13,500 camp nights, times $118.90, times 3.4, the number gets pretty big pretty quick, and it's over $5 million as far as what's being dumped into that. To some degree, that's, that could be high, that could be low, but maybe it's out to lunch, but that's the one basis we have to measure that. But we, we did it, and it was, it didn't seem insanely crazy. We don't, we don't have the lines going from the booth up all the way up into the road sometimes, in Centennial, when we're registering. We did have, it was a bit of a challenging summer with a few more challenging folks entering into the campgrounds, and that's, I think that's just the nature of people having been cooped up for so long and ready to get out, that when they got out, they ran a little bit too hard, or, in terms of those things. So that was, that was a fantastic little nugget to, to mine, last week that Joel pulled out, to see those numbers that are, that were so nice. We need that. Looking at some of this stuff, when you get to the back of the report, it does have the breakdowns of uses, as well as the overall revenues. If you look at the day use on the, on page nine, we had 11,147 independent day-use vehicles come through the parks, and that's when you drive in and pay your $8, and then go home, either come back the next day or not. So that's, that's the number of cars that just went through on a day-use basis. If you take that one step forward over to the right, then you'll see under day-use season that we sold 759 day-use passes, which is higher, obviously, than the last four years, and I think it's the highest ever. But, so there's no way of knowing how many uses per pass that was. That might be something we touch base with people in the future, to see if, send them a little note and say, hey, how many times do you think you use Centennial to find an average use load from the day-use pass? Because if we had 11,147 individual drive-throughs come in to fish, or do whatever, one would think that there could be, if the average was five times, that takes it all the way up to 15,000 visits, vehicle visits in the campgrounds during the summertime. If they come 10, or whatever else, and you know, now we're talking 18,000, so it goes up pretty quick. The only numbers that are tending to trend, that are trending down a little bit are the boat launches, which isn't totally surprising, considering the challenging with the, challenge with the king numbers, and the restriction on those type of things until the kings come back. We'll probably continue to see that. At one point, at peak many years ago, I think we were launching 2,400 total boats this summer. Now, if you look at this, now we got 1,200 on the powerboat launches, and 13, and 392 on the, on the drift boats. Drift boats obviously pull out someplace else, but you could look at number of factors, location, but also, you know, we're, the state boat launches right now are 25, and we're at 17. So it's not a price issue, it's just a location issue, as far as what, in terms of those things go. So, we never keep up with firewood, yet somehow we still manage to sell 1,800 bundles of that. We did budget, the council approved the budget for this year for a firewood bundler, as well as a small process that goes on the, the Bobcats, so hopefully that will streamline and allow us to maybe, my dream is to get up to 2,500, or maybe 3,000 bundles of wood a year. We, we constantly run out in, in terms of producing them, how we have been doing it. Our bundles are bigger than, than the other places you see around, so we're proud of that. And the machine we got for the bundler does produce a bundle that's almost the same size as ours, so that's pretty exciting in terms of going through those. But that day use is just crazy, at 11,000, and the next one was, next, next highest was, was 2,019, and that was 8,000. So that's a pretty good jump, when you start looking at that in terms of camping, and then Swiftwater, in terms of uses. You know, Swiftwater is over 116,000, almost $117,000 in revenues alone, and that's the highest it's ever been by far. 16,000 over the last, as far as direct monetarily, the overall gross revenues came in about $90,000 higher this year than last year. Last year was fairly flat from 19. In terms of that stuff, we definitely benefited over the years from different stuff we've done, but we, we were busy. So that's a good thing, and hopefully the overall, that quarter's sales tax revenue, when it comes in from the borough, will be up 20% from where, where it was last year, too, you never know. We budgeted very conservatively, so the 90s a little bit there, but I'm trying to get a real picture, but it was, it was positive overall, and, and people were going home happy this year. That definitely helps when, when you have a fat run like we did. And the high point moving forward is people have figured out, what some of us that are down here every year figured out is, there's still some really good red fishing in August. So I think what we'll find is we'll have a carryover into the, into the next, next year is marginal, because it's tough to do with, with all the humpies in the river. But on a non-humpy year, you can do really well on reds, all the way into the middle of August, and it seems like they, that people figure that out. So that could stretch our, our peak season, of where we have the busiest, all the way into the middle of August, which is exciting to try to boost as the, as the shoulder season. But we also had higher numbers in June, and higher numbers in August, and higher numbers in September than we normally have. So that's always been the challenge. Pretty easy, cut and dry, getting people here when the reds are here. It's getting them to bop in and come hang out during the off-season in June and/or later August and September. So that's pretty exciting, to have those, that trending up, second year of increase in a row. Obviously, over the summer, we went back to Music in the Park, had the various layouts, and we used some equipment differently, and as we got through, we kind of got back to some normalcy by the end of the summer, but we, we, that was like, the mood for people with that coming back, it just changed, and just made a difference in the community, and almost was a relief. You could feel people, except for the people that were angry that we put the beer section at the back for the beginning, people breathed a sigh of relief in terms of that stuff, so.
I have a question. Is it possible, I know we don't usually do this, could we go section by section, or will that take too long?
No, I can, I can.
To see if anybody has any questions?
Okay.
Is that appropriate?
Yeah, we can do whatever, yeah.
Okay, I just think that if there are any questions, does anybody have any questions in the campground season, or?
Just, I'm not sure I heard you correctly. Did you say 13,000 camp nights?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
13,000, I think the exact answer is 13,500, or it's on, it's on the, it's on the graph, it's kind of hard to read. So, it was, I think I added together, 13,4, 13,5, so that's a nice fat number. So, so moving forward, Music in the Park, we've got some project going in, this next kind of, paragraph kind of hints towards something later in the packet, a couple things later in the packet that we're working at doing things. Working with the Kenai Watershed Forum to install some stuff called gravel pave, to try to see if we can get some of the grass protected. I won't go into the details, other than it's a material you put down, and it protects the dirt from getting. So, we're going to use that at the basketball courts, and then expand some gravel over where the food trucks and stuff are, to, to work that direction, in terms of those things. For the most part, Sports Center SRSC was fairly quiet for the summer in terms of events. We had some small training events that, that were held. But then we also had the 4H Agricultural Expo that was a huge hit. They were happy. They were, they loved it, and they said it was their funnest one ever. Their attendance was decent, higher, a little bit higher than, I think, what they anticipated. But that was a pretty exciting event, to have the cows and chickens and the pigs, and Old McDonald's Farm in the arena. And watching those 4H kids, you see the, some area youth that are dialed in, and getting after it with their animals, and the history, and, and everything, working forward. It was interesting, Colton Rankin, our newest full-time employee, stepped in just a little bit ago, interviewing him. He's 19 years old, he'll be doing the turf and stuff. But asking him in the interview, you know, some of the work he'd been doing with 4H, he pointed out, well, I was working on soil analyzation, as far as feeding the ground, instead of trying to treat the plant, so that you can get a better growth from the get-go. And that's the theory that popped up in our, in turf management trainings, is treat the soil as opposed to the plant. And so now we have this 19-year-old kid out of the, out of the, out of the 4H program that's already fairly dialed in on soil analysis and composition, and micronutrients, and everything else. So this 4H, it's actually exciting to watch some of the work these kids have done, and it's, it's pretty groovy, and to be able to hold it at the sports center, and then start regrowing it along the way. They, they did leave us a present, and at the beginning of the summer, they came in and planted sunflowers across the front of the building, and by the time they finished up, they're about five feet, four, five feet tall, and all had blooms all the way across the front of the sports center. And rather than going for seed next year, we did order some of those plant starts to carry that forward and keep going, and as, as a, as a decoration for the sports center. The, the project-wise, this, our staff are, this summer were pretty much rock stars. We had a couple staff, Cole and Sage, who went through and rebuilt about, almost every set of stairs that needed some kind of tweaking attention, and/or complete rebuild. These two employees went through and, and rebuilt everything from fabrication and welding, to leveling, to everything, to carpentry. So that worked really well. We, our staff also completed the highway, the downtown beautification project in conjunction with John Zarneski and Jen from the Planning and Zoning Department, moved forward and got that. I think we're up to 90 trees planted, and we have 60 flower baskets we hang, and we've got a couple small areas we're still going to work on that weren't included in the project, but the landowners and the state have agreed that we'll go and touch that up, so we can get some continuity with, of the nice grass going all the way through. And hopefully that'll, that'll carry forward, and we are getting. And we, we are getting rave reviews. The city is for beautification. And you can tell when you drive through the city now, it just makes a world of difference. Everything from the corner at Trustworthy to the Y to, to everything else, it just, it just changes the personality. We've always had nice flowers in the parks, but now we have them all the way through town. And that's, that's almost, yeah, it's just changed the whole, the whole world. Sports Center major remodel maintenance, the, the public works department and the administration just worked with the council to get the budget increased due to costs and, and scope. Right now, it, it's set to hit the street, the bid for that is set to hit on Sunday. And then we bid in mid-December, come in in mid-December and then awarded in December. And then, and then for a May fifteenth start, we were able to organize our spring schedule to give a little time there. So they will start on May fifteenth with the completion date, I believe, is the third week of September. Yet we'll still be able to hold the four H Ag Expo and, and two other events in August that have been cleaved out of there. But for the rest of the park, we won't be doing any events. But that, in meeting, that's pretty exciting considering that we've got a forty or thirty, twenty-two, next year it'll be thirty-nine years, not twenty-three. It's, it was open in eighty-three. So it's not bad shape for a forty-year-old building that hasn't had any real huge maintenance projects other than the roof and replacement of the rink over its, over its span. So that's really exciting. Beetle kill trees, obviously you see those folks around still. We're still waiting for the grant. If that doesn't come through, we're looking at some alternative approaches to that. But we go through and identify those and remove them as, as, as we find where we, where they're elevated from just dead to danger trees. The first couple of years of the dead tree, they actually stiffen up and are fairly stubborn and location-specific. Your third year can be still safe after the third year, then, then you start to have to really, can be concerned with some falling trees and such. So in terms of that stuff. Some excitement within that, we had a, had some capital projects proposed in the budget, and one of which was improvements in parking and expansion of beach area out at Ark Lake. And council saw that and, and said, we would like to speed this project up and fund it this year instead of next year. So we've already cleared, done all the clearing and the extra area for wintertime parking. We installed two hundred and twelve feet of parking rail there, a new gate. We harvested from the excavation of the clearing area probably five to eight thousand dollars worth of landscape rocks that were used. And moving forward in that, in the spring, we'll be doing some hydrose, some fine tuning, some hydroseeding, and then adding some sand on the beach to expand that recreation area. Carrying forward beyond that is even, we just received a grant under the CARES. We had money under the CARES, but we received a special outdoor recreation grant for fifty thousand dollars. And what we're, administration, what we're planning on doing, we still have to accept it. It'll be going for council to, to accept and appropriate it. But what, what's going to happen with that is to have a mobile, mobile event trailer where when we do it at Ark Lake in the wintertime, it'll, it'll show up, we'll pop the doors, it'll have a hundred and fifty pairs of rental skates, it'll have the Sammy Bobby Seal push-along things, it'll have a skate sharpener in there, staffing, lights, heat and, and music. So that when we show up, we'll have a whole skating assembly ready to go, whether we show up at Ark Lake or Saldana Creek Park for the skating path, or whether or not we take it over to Saldana Elementary for an afternoon or evening skate as we maintain that rink over there. So we'll be, we'll be picking that up. So that's just, and then we're working then, hopefully that there'll be another one of those grants then that we can move forward and then stock the trailer for summertime event equipment for in the summertime. So in the wintertime, it would be the skate trailer. And then in the wintertime, it would be the, just the fun trailer. We did a, a, a small version of that a few years ago when we had an intern where she, where Micaiah Smith would take and, and a number of various play items, games, you know, stuff over to Ark, over to Saldana Creek Park. And it was scheduled and produced. And she'd have anywhere from ten to thirty moms and tots and such show up for playdate on the afternoon. So though that most exciting part about that particular aspect is there was one lady who had just moved to town, knew nobody, and after her third day in town, her kids had friends. And so, which is tough in the summertime to move in, you know, it's hard enough, hard enough coming into a new school, but it's even harder for kids to show up in the summertime when everybody's going in different directions and not meeting anybody. So that's, that's very, very exciting. In fact, we have the, the projectors ordered for the, and we included also in there is a twenty-foot inflatable screen and a better projector and a generator. So this will all be standalone operating. The, the pieces and parts, the screen will be ordered tomorrow, the generator, some of that stuff, and the projector's already on the way in terms of that stuff. We did, through help with maintenance department, got started on our River View lawn expansion. And we got a bunch of clearing done there. And right about the time we got the amount of area we anticipated working on cleared, we ended up with an opportunity to also buy some playground apparatus that was tied into the ARPA thing. So we'll not only have a large grass area or medium-sized grass area there when we're done, we'll also have a climbing apparatus, kind of like what they have over in Kenai with the cables and the ropes and those type of things. Might have seen it sitting at the sports center for a week or so during the ARPA conference. Were able to, to get a scookum deal on that because they wanted to bring up and showcase for the conference and, and then said, who, who would like to buy this at less than fifty percent of retail? And we were able to move some money around and work with Stephanie and, and Melanie and Joel. And then maybe they were able to get that knocked out. So that was an added bonus. As far as stuff, other stuff, we'd hosted the Alaska Recreation Park Association Conference at the Sports Center. That was a pretty good hit in terms of those. We had folks in from Fairbanks, Cordova, Wasilla, and all over the place for three, four days where we had a pre-conference turf education sessions. And then basic sessions, we worked with AML JIA to bring in some insurance-related topics in terms of those and move forward. Had about, I think there were sixty attendees. And everybody walked away with a smile, loving Saldana. They were, every morning we heard from someone how much they loved the trail, the fact that they could walk from the Kenai, the Kenai River Lodge, across the bridge and hit that trail, Centennial Walk, all the way from essentially town to the sports center along the river. And people were really stoked on that. And then also, one of the sessions we did was a mountain, mountain bike, fat tire bike. And they did a tour up at Salteshi Trails. And in terms of, to see what we have in terms of beyond the river. That's kind of one of what we've been up to there. The Brown Bears are going as far as our operational, where we're at now. We've got operational since I wrote this, we have now five games of the Brown Bears. We're working with a program with the mask requirement and such. We're working with an ambassador program through the high schools where high school groups are volunteering. They're bringing ten people for each game. And we're providing them with CARES money and emoluments. And they're making contact with people as far as urging them to put the masks on. We're also, the Brown Bears are donating tickets so that every night, if you get caught with a mask on, you're entered in for a drawing. I got, and then they get, if you win, you get two tickets, two free tickets from the Brown Bears. And, and people have been pretty receptive. We, it's, it's a non-confrontational, obviously, when we have high school kids doing it. But so far, they're doing really well. And people are very polite to them. And whether they say yes and take the mask or whether they say no thanks, either way, we haven't had any issues related to that. So that's actually really cool to be able to work with the different school groups and the kids coming in and, and going that way. So Jessica's been there for a couple of those. And then Joel and I are at the games to handle any challenges that go from there. But there really haven't been any other than handing out masks and moving forward. The Bears, part of their participation in that is they are including the mask requirement on all their social media as well as their radio spots as a condition from us. And then also, they're providing staff that goes through and hands out tickets as, as do we have some, our laborer staff that sometimes end up standing around or just sweeping. They are actually handing out and catching people with masks on, handing out tickets and that. So trying to make the public contact. And so far, everybody's pretty happy as far as where things are working. Hopefully, it can transpose to more, get more goals for the Brown Bears. And then we'll be really happy. So, but when you can pull thirteen volunteers out of the community for each game, even if some of it's funded, it's fundraising for the high schools, it's still a pretty good community effort put together. So in terms of those. So if you know any, any school groups, be it chess, soccer, volleyball, whatever, that want, that groups that, that want to raise money, what, what we've done is essentially, they may, if they bring us ten volunteers for each game from CARES Fund, they, we pay them twenty dollars per person per hour. So each, for instance, the first weekend we did it, we had three games and the Saldana basketball team made eighteen hundred dollars towards their, towards their program. So that's a pretty good fundraiser. Beats the heck out of washing cars when it's forty-five degrees, I'm betting. So. The next topic that I want to press on this, what were plans unless there's some stuff. As you can see in the picture, Saldana, there's no question that the pavilion end of the, of the park gets, the grass just gets loved to death. And part of the worst area is in that bottom right picture. And whereas the picture on the left is the food truck area closest to the gas station. When we built the park, we didn't have any food trucks in the area. When the park was designed, we had no food trucks in the area. We did have a, the, the Wednesday market, but nonetheless, and we had some events there, but we didn't know. So what, what ultimately what's happening is, I will start with the left, is the trucks on the left, the bottom left picture, the trucks park on the grass. People wait for their product on the gravel. On the other end, the trucks end up parking on the gravel that's adjacent to the parking lot and then wait and mill around and walk around on the grass. The only problem is, is then the grass turns to mud. And that's what happens. So we're gonna, we're looking at that saying, okay, we can't really make it like the other side because we have so much through traffic off the parking lot and a little different design. So what we're going to do is add about another ten to fifteen feet of gravel off the edge of the parking on the bathroom end. So as you're coming into the park, that parking, we're on the pavilion end, we're going to widen that so that the food trucks are parked on the gravel. And then people can wait and the main traffic path during those events is still on the gravel. So that even though it's not grass quite as pretty, it's just, at least it's not mud. So that's what we're planning on doing to rectify that as, in terms of those and hopefully be able to work on the soil as well and alleviate some of those challenges. So people ask about the mud and some of that stuff. That's, that's the plan we're putting forth ahead of time. But also, do we doing some work over by the basketball court where we install some stuff that'll help the grass? The grass got denuded off of around the basketball court. And we had planned to do that. It wasn't totally hard to figure out where they, where we would need to do a treatment eventually. But nonetheless, we know exactly the high traffic areas and now we can protect them and work in terms of those things. So that's where we're trying to move forward. You can see on the next page over what approximately the, the black line is approximately what will happen in terms of gravel when it's expanded. These are from earlier drawings. So these, the, the tree, the five trees there aren't actually there. So we won't impact that. But we will widen it so that people can get a better pathway through there without the grass being so beat up. The other thing is a scheduling, administrative scheduling decision we're, we're working on that we see is necessary in order to try to catch up and keep up with that area that's, that's so busy. And that is to not schedule any big events on there, on the grass that end until, until Memorial Day. What happened last year is we started events the middle of May. And it was a cold spring, so stuff hadn't taken off as it is. But even so, though, we're, we're, we're jumping on the grass and starting to streppen on it right as it's coming out of dormancy. And it's not, it never did really catch up. We put fertilizer on there. We have the soil samples back from the labs. And our soil is good. Our makeup is good. Our watering is good. It's just, it's the, it's just so compacted and so beat up on the top end that we're actually finding nitrogen when you put it on your lawn. It makes it grow fast. But what's happening is that, is the top of the grass is getting broke off to such a level to where we're not even using the nitrogen comparatively speaking to an untrampled area. The nitrogen's lower this time of year, whereas, whereas it's high there because we're not getting enough, we're not able to help the plants grow enough top-wise to use it up. So we're going to be working towards that and, and then have our first big event allowance to be on the Memorial Day weekend, just so that we can get the grass a chance to wake up and, and get growing. And then be able to, and then start working on it before it, let it, let it get a chance to take off before we start beating it up too much. So that's where we're at on that. I think that's about all I got. We were able to insert the talk about the trailer in the movie screen. So that's exciting. We're heading into, as I noted a little bit, to just finishing up the details to ship off the propose for maintaining the Saldana Elementary ice rink for the school district or for the community on the school property, working on that agreement. We did that last year and it worked out pretty well. And we're, we're stepping that up so that way during the wintertime, they, people have opportunities to skate and, and do such things at Saldana Creek Path, Ark Lake, those Ark Lake, the, not only the path, but also the skating areas and rink areas, but also the actual rink itself at Saldana Hill that volunteers had done it periodically over the years. But it's, we have all the equipment to, to knock it out pretty well and work with that with us and maintenance department. So we'll be pushing forward to have that go and keep going on that one moving forward. So. Does anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions or comments from anybody?
And I could say I'm pretty excited about that, that trailer idea. Pretty excited. I think it's awesome. And I love the idea of the gravel being extended out for that path and the carts. Of course, I have an interest in that, but I think it's a great solution. The problem is, it's been there for a long time. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who has any questions or comments? Denise?
I do. You know what? At Saldana Creek Park, you had that story walk with the kids. And I, I think I heard that there was some vandalism. So they took all those posts out. Is that going to go back in next year?
They, they, I think it's been removed, but they have, I keep calling it helicore, but there's a, there's a business out of Homer that has a piling system with a, that basically screws the pilings into the ground. They've offered to provide the posts for the library. So it'll be going back in once we can affect that. We don't, we don't tend to pour the concrete down along there. But I mean, there's some silly stuff. We got the vandalism, but also got rave reviews. Library got rave reviews about walking. So it was a pretty cool deal. And actually, when we get down over that hill, it gets a little more treated, it gets a little more out. We pulled the picnic tables out because they were attracting not exactly the behavior we wanted because they were kind of out of sight, out of mind. But then with the story walk, now we have people walking down through there. So it, it's a motivation to, to have those not, to limit the unused areas in the park. Kind of like what you see when, with the dog park over with Aspen, you know, at times we would go in and clear it out. But now that the dogs are in there and everything else, there's a lot less silliness that goes on because there's people around. There's some autonomy. When now that we've opened up Ark Lake, we don't find near as many cars stashed in there sitting for many profiles. But nonetheless, questionable durations and for questionable purposes. So once you get it opened out, you have two options. You can either open it up or find a way to funnel more people through. And that's what the story walk did. And turned out to be pretty cool, actually. Other than you just have to build it ironproof. And that takes the budgeting with Rachel Scram, our, we got a whole other company that's going to screw the post in, then they won't be pulling them out.
Thank you, Ms. Deutal. Do you have any additional questions or comments? No? I'll, I'll follow up. I had a couple of questions and comments. The Music in the Park and how the, the layout was modified this year. And I really liked that, with the barricades and so forth, and the fact that you had items moved. I did have a few comments from people in the community, maybe more than a few. I know that the beer garden was pushed pretty far back in the beginning. And I think that was hard for some of the people in the beer garden. But as it got pushed up closer and closer and closer, it minimized people who sat in their chairs or wanted to dance. And I wonder if there could be maybe- And I wonder if there could be maybe a, a way to figure out how to make that work so that everybody had an access that they felt comfortable with. So that's, that's just a comment that I thought I should pass on from community members. I don't know, it was near the end of the, of the, and I thought the music in the park was wonderful. It was really a, a nice relief and going down just even if you stayed separate from people, you could hear some really nice music. A lot of my things of thanks. I did have a question on the hockey. When, when the students, it's Sohigh kids who were working, is that correct, most?
Yeah, we, 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 as far as the groups we're working with, we just headed towards Sohigh for a couple of reasons. Number one, they've got the organized groups, but we just limited to Sohigh so that we basically as a defensible place to fund the school activities without having to make a judgment whether this one or that one or who gets what to date. We just worked with local Sohigh.
Okay. I love that idea. And, and the mitigation was that, it sounds like it was safe for kids.
Yeah, they, they wear masks and actually also wear rubber gloves and, and go from there. And then they make contact with, there's, there's, usually have 10 of them, have three of them at the front door hanging and handing people masks and then we have them at the bottom of the stairs by the office and then over by the bleachers on the west side and then one kind of a floater. So they make contact and just say, you know, I'm, I'm from Sohigh, I want a mask. Oh, no thanks. Well, maybe, because if you get caught wearing it, you can enter in for the drain. And so we worked with them with scout and, and then some groups are rock stars and some of them are, you know, marginal, but overall average out, you know, it's a really neat deal because the kids, the kids are smiling when they're doing it, they're happy to be making money for their, for their group and, and, and they get to watch the Bears games and they're learning how to double multitask because, you know, I, I work with the ones by the office and, you know, I need you to stand back and talk to people and watch over the game from there as if you have your nose against the glass and, you know, making contact and people aren't seeing, you know, feeling as comfortable. So, and they all understood that, you know, if you talk to them, it's amazing when you get some of those kids and away you go, so.
Thank you. And then a couple more real fast. I, project wise for the staff, this was an amazing summer. I stopped and thanked the people watering the flowers whenever I was at a red light and I had an opportunity. What, what is the status of jobs going into the fall and spring? And I know you, you lay a lot of kids off because they're kids and they're going back to school, but you've maintained your staff that you have, probably with the exception of maybe people who planted the flowers in, in the summer. I just am wondering what that is, looks like.
Staffing was a challenge and it is for everybody. We thought maybe it was money, it's not. We had the, we did do some little bit of reorganization work with Stephanie and Jessica, and actually Stephanie and Jessica said, what if you do this? And so we changed the, the status of a couple of positions to where it still fits within the budget overall model and everything else, but allows, allowed us to carry over a couple employees from the summer that have been with us a couple of summers and they'll be able to work through, through, through the, through the winter months as opposed to laying everybody off. Historically, we're, we're limited to six months with the bulk of the employees and this was one of those summers where you wanted to keep almost all of them because we just had a bunch of great people. And so we did change the mod, the staffing model a little bit in that, but what we're finding, when we advertised for that, that, that last deal, which still went outside, it was for $1,863, it was for a regular part-time positions, which is up to $1,500 hours a year for $1,863 an hour, other than the two employees that were already employed with us who had to change class and reapply, we had two applicants out of all that for $1,863 an hour. So we had a total of four applicants, only two were from the general public and the same thing held through midsummer when we're actually advertising for full-time temporary. We had four applicants, two of which were late returners that had worked for us before. So it's a challenge. He and I had the same part of challenge heading into the ice season. We ended up with a bunch of overtime and stuff because we had some COVID cases, we had a vacation case and at one point we were down about 40%. Still pulled it off just because every, you know, whenever, as a Parks and Rec Director and Assistant Director, Joel and I are fairly spoiled because if we ask one of the employees, hey, I got nobody, can you do it? Yup. And they step up and do it. We were joking, actually right before Joel left on honeymoon, he said, if we're paying, because Kenai pays $12 an hour to their similar positions, the lifeguards at North Penn Rec are only making 13 something. I was like, well, maybe we're actually horrible bosses, Joel, and they're just here for the money. But we seem to have a happy crew that's very productive and we got some young people that, that have helped us out fantastically and with some skills and we have some within the full-time staff and the part-time staff, we have some phenomenal skill bases that are brought to us. We can do everything from fabricator and aluminum construction to build the trailer from scratch, which we just finished up except for the axles, to haul those yellow barricades around, to fixing the Zamboni, to running the refrigeration systems. We have a fantastic staff who like to work and then go from there. So, but staffing's been, been tough just to find anybody and, and, and that's just about every employer there is, is what we're hearing.
Thank you very much for that answer. I, I, I remember you telling me that a little earlier, I wonder if it had changed. My last question is, is the thing that you're gonna put out in front of the, on one, in the Riverview Park, is it, was that the item that was out front?
Yes. That's sweet. That's sweet.
Well, I want to thank you for the work you do in Riverview, in all our parks, but the Riverview Park is right near my house and so I see kids, I've seen more kids there and clearing it out and making it safe for our kids is really important. And I have to tell you, I have to confess, I did slide down the kid's slide, it was so much fun. So thank you for that work and, and thank you for your, for your, your report. I really appreciate all of it, all we all do.
And if you get the chance, also thank the Salatana, the City Council, because when we're at the ARPR conference or some of these national conferences, and it was evident when people came here, we did with the turf maintenance program, we, we showcased one of the pieces of equipment that the council approved and got for us. And the staffs from the other departments look at us and, and Joel and I are humble, but our, our, our recreation department is hell, is, is supported by the council and administration and the community, so above and beyond what we hear from other entities that is just amazing. We sit in some of those classes and kind of hide in the back as we hear some of these people's challenges to, to get the basic stuff. And ever since when I got here in 1993, the one thing that's always rang true at the council level and advisory board level is that quality of life is very, very important. And they, as far as maintenance and far as recreation opportunities and those types of things. So as a department, we're, we're able to attract people that are really good because we're, we are taken care of very well as a, as a department, as a city employee, period. Talking with folks from other cities, a friend of mine works for another city and, and he was talking about, you know, he's got miles and miles and miles and miles of roads to maintain, but they're cutting his staff. So Salatana is very fortunate for, for doing some of those things. Whether it's the campgrounds, whether it's the music in the park, I mean, the councils, council here, we, we've come up with some crazy ideas and it's worked, the support that the councils have given for the music in the park and the development of the park has changed the peninsula. So it's top to bottom from our skate guards all the way up to the council and the mayors that we have. We're very fortunate in terms of Parks and Rec Department here, nationally speaking as well, so.
Thank you. And that, the, that's the reason I asked that. I, I did see with the key, with our music in the park, how the Kenai Watershed Forum donated some of their extra gravel. And so it's really apparent here with our, with our council, with our, with our mayor, with everybody who works in the city, our planning department, that we are, we're strong, we're inclusive, and I really think that we're a family and a community oriented place. And I, that's why I like it here. I shouldn't say like, that's why I love it here. I mean, we have our differences, the pandemic has been very difficult, but I really see how one group, I got some extra stuff, we can't use it, we paid for it, take it, so I appreciate that and thank you very much for your report, Mr. Carmichael. And that brings me to my report and I'm gonna start by standing up because they gave us these beautiful scoffs, and I do say scoffs, scarf's is hard, but this was, I attended it and it's reversible, it's really hot, I'm like sweating. But it was one of the most well-organized, collaborative, interesting, eye-opening conference I've been to in a long time and I go to a lot of them for the school board. Not saying that the school board, I, I don't learn a lot as well, I'm, I'm going to a conference there tomorrow, virtually, but it was really impressive. And I want to thank Joel Todd and Andrew Carmichael and Caitlin LeClaire, I hope I'm pronouncing that, and Madeline McEwen. I am so impressed with how that all rolled out and it's the first one they've had in quite a while that wasn't virtual. The conference schedule, I, I didn't go to all of it, we were all invited. I could only go to some of it because I had a lot of other responsibilities, but I did attend the Unexpected Solutions and it was by my daughter, the Solutions of Climate Change and Composting. I also attended the Alaska Long Trails, which was so informative, it was amazing. The keynote speaker, Luke Mail, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly. I did attend the playground, playground and pool tour and I've been to all the playgrounds in my community or our community, excuse me, but I hadn't been over to Kenai in a long time and then I hadn't been over to the pool in the Kiski in years and so that was really quite informative. I also spent time in the conference rooms, I went to one other one, I can't remember which one it was, I could only fit in four of them. But, but what I wanted to say about what they did was they brought people together who were like-minded but who had different ideas. And so out of that conference, what we gained was fun and we, we learned how, it's so important, excuse me, I am not talking both ways, we, we learned what Parks and Rec does for communities within our state and how we are one of the leaders and how many trails we have and how many paths we have and how many opportunities we have for young people not only to get outside, but to have Parks and Rec, small communities in and, in like Homer where the kids come and they go to activities, they come to our little room or building and they actually move out from that and, and partake in different experiences. They had a vendor lounge, they had some fun activities, they had a curling that they did one night, they had off-site tours, they, they allowed, they didn't allow, they provided people, if you didn't want to take the bus in the pool tour, which a lot of people didn't, but there were quite a few people there and Andrew and the group did a great job on that. You could go and do a trail ride on some of the trails up, I think it was Salteshi, but I'm not sure, I didn't go on that. I also, and they had things like a silent auction to raise money for scholarships, I believe for Parks and Rec people to go to conferences and not necessarily have to pay all of it on their own. And so that was a nice added benefit. But I liked in many instances that information was scientifically presented, you know, on the science of something, but also on the benefits like of play for kids and how important it was and how in a way we got to play. The long trail gave me and others the incentive of becoming more involved in that, to see how do we connect and maybe have some of that, I don't know that it will ever come our way, I don't know if we'll ever go over some of the obstacles that could include us or maybe that can make it the kind of trail that everybody wants, I hope. But the, the organization, I mean, everything went food, went fine, the food, I don't know how I landed on that, the food was amazing. Willow King and her group did some of it, I think Odie's did, I, there were several people who, who present, who, who were part of that, but there was a build, there was a feeling of building community and I, everybody who was there, they united the awards banquet, I did go to that, they were so excited it would be here again next year. And it did bring, you know, money into our community as well, people who stayed in a hotel, people who ate when they weren't there, people who stayed an extra day or so. I don't, obviously nobody went, you know, fishing in October that I know of. But, and they, and they just had a really diverse group of people and diverse sets of topics. So I just want to say how proud I am of our Parks and, Parks and Rec group, I mean, not myself included, I did win a prize though, that I thought I should give back, but they made me take it, it was a cute cup. But, and I, the only worry I had that was that Joel was running around so much, he looked exhausted, but I think he enjoyed the, the time as well, the amount of time he put in there and the whole group. So thank you, Mr. Carmichael. Thank you, Mr. Todd, even though you're not here. And that is the end of my report on Parks and Rec and my comments on the, the community that we have and how it's a good place to live.
Thanks, Penny. Little side note on Luke Mail, he's actually a friend of Joel's. He's a very quiet man who is a bad dude in terms of the one race he did was 110 miles to the Brooks Range in 36 hours. I mean, he's just an animal. He's what 99% of the outdoor guys want to be and you'd never know it talking to him and in terms of some of his adventures and to listen to his speak and some of the message he was able to portray was very, very solid, even, you know, we talked with Ricky Geese and, and Tim Dillon afterwards as far as the progression. So it was, it was really neat and very, and just like his personality, I don't know him, just like his personality, the message was very subtle but impressive, so it was, turned out really good.
That takes us to item C, City Manager. Are they on, are they on? No, they're not, okay. So we'll go past that. Is there anybody on, on the public? On the phone? No, not at all? Okay. So that leaves us to council comments. Mr., thank you.
The more Andrew talks, it gives me more time to write down different things. So this, this may be as long as his report, but the City Council approved the funds for the renovation out at the sports center, which included the new reader board out front, which apparently had a bad, bad bulbs, I guess.
Half of, half of it's dead.
The Brown Bear started their games, it was the last weekend, I believe. There was one incident out there that created a little bit of problems and that was over a sign that was placed on the glass board around the rink. It eventually ended up as a comment made to the City Council at the last council meeting. I believe we have it resolved now, they're going to be allowed to place their sign there whenever they're there for Brown Bear's games and I don't know what that schedule might be. The next one down is Veterans Day is November the 11th. There will be an unveiling of a new plaque on the Iron Mike statue at the park, Salatana Creek Park. That's tentatively scheduled for 4:00 PM on Veterans Day, November the 11th. And I understand there will be a, a choir group from Kenai High School that will be there that will do some patriotic songs and then they will come over to the VFW where they will have a, a small group of musicians there also and do some stuff for the vets there. The Levitt Grant was received again for the 2022 year, so that will be continuing on with music in the park for next summer. So, that will be continuing on with Music in the Park for next summer. Overall, sales tax revenue was up in the city last, well, this year so far. Um, actually, you know, it's somewhere in the teens, somewhat, um, substantial. And, um, the trailer that Andrew spoke about and the extra funding, that's about fifty-six thousand dollars. That is up on the council agenda for Wednesday, for an ordinance to accept those funding. Uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars of it's directly from the state of Alaska. And then, um, the Borough received the same, similar grant and they're providing an additional twenty-eight thousand dollars to the city to expand on. And, uh, you mentioned our parks and the trails and everything else, and it's brought up something that I've mentioned to the administration here, well, a couple of months ago, to maybe look into, um, adding to our parks here, exercise area. Uh, an exercise area that is a permanent part of the park. Um, it's outdoor type of equipment, but it's equipment that, uh, people that, who may not be able to get their exercise at a gymnasium because of the, the costs, something they could use, something that older residents would be able to use as a, uh, exercise area also. Um, you know, I would like to see, at least, uh, look into it. I know there's some other areas and other parks, I think there may be one up in Anchorage, uh, that have that, um, type of area set aside. And that would be in addition to our system, and I think it would be great. And the last thing is I want to thank all of you for all the work you do. Um, we have probably the best park system in the, well, not only in the state, but probably in the country. Um, we have a lot of use out of it, uh, everybody enjoys it. Um, and it's just a great job that the staff does, everyone, uh, that, that works in Parks and Rec. Um, it's just, uh, it's great, it's, uh, it's a, a real asset and benefit to all of our citizens here in town and everyone in the, in the surrounding area. And, um, I appreciate all the work you do and look forward to working with you for the future. And that is the end of mine.
Paul, I, I got an email out to Dave, Dave, yesterday, I haven't heard back. So, we've got the four P M. at the Iron Mike, so, and then it'll go to the VFW. Do you know if there's any, so they're not gonna do anything at the sports center, correct? To your knowledge? Okay.
From what I understand, there will, this will probably be the only, uh, Veterans Day activity that will be occurring.
Okay.
There's nothing going on anywhere else.
Okay. So, we'll, um, if you have any contact information for the band, um, could you throw it my way? Because I haven't heard anything from anybody, whether they need sound. Obviously, we'll need sound by the.
The band will not be at the park, it's just gonna be the choir group. Just because of the temperature could be, you know, it could be like it was today, you know? Rain and snow coming down, so, um, it'll just be the singers. Uh, they're gonna actually do the unveiling at the, um, the Iron Mike and then they're gonna go over and do a little thing over at the, um, Purple Heart Memorial also. And I also might mention, just to sideline the veterans, the VA clinic is scheduled to open here very shortly. Uh, they were actually planning a grand opening ceremony on, um, November tenth, Wednesday the tenth. But that is up in the air, um, it could get postponed until November the seventeenth. From what I was told here the other day is they're, they're moving in, but they're also having in some moving in difficulties with stuff that just doesn't work quite right.
Thank you very much, Mayor Whitney. Are there any questions for Mayor Whitney? Annette, do you have any questions?
I'm not a good time, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. I, I had one question. Um, the exercise area, where will that be? I.
Any one of our parks, um, anywhere would be accessible to a lot of people. Um, I don't know if we could squeeze anything more in Saldana Creek Park because there's a lot of stuff in there right now. But, um, you know, um, just any one of the parks.
I know Kenai used to have one over down behind Safeway Cars, I think, in the back. You could, this is one where you go and you stretch or you do exercises and then go to the next station.
Right, I think they used to have that, uh, trail that ran across the street from the old courthouse and I don't know how far back it went.
Yes, I don't think it's huge. I, I was in it a long time ago, so, um, and then, um, well, you just answered the other question, somebody asked it. Thank you very much for your report. And that leads us to board member comments. Um, would you like to go first, Annette?
I'm sure. I'm super, um, proud to be a part of this board and all the good work that it does. Super thankful for Andrew and his leadership and just, uh, the pressure, a great place in the town, as it's already been mentioned many times. And just the collaboration and the unity that we have make our town so great, it's just amazing to me. And I'm just, yeah, I just wanted to take that to you, like, say thank you, Andrew, everybody that works so hard to make it so great. And thanks for, uh, following me back, I could be a part of it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Villa. Mr. Delker?
Just a few quick comments, kind of to follow up with what Annette had to say. I just, it's great to be part of this community and, and to be on this board. And it, it's just so much that we offer to our community and, and the, the ability to recreate and take advantage of it is, we draw in people not just from Saldana, from all around the whole peninsula, and it's just incredible, and even from the state with our summer events. And so it's just, every time I think that, you know, Andrew and Joel have pretty much pulled out everything that we could possibly do in this community, they come up with something else or somebody brings up an idea and they run with it. And, and so it's just, it's always incredible and I'm, it's just always amazed by what the next step is. I'm just kind of like anticipating, okay, what's next? Because there's always something. And so it's just great to be part of that and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. DeTyle?
Sure, I guess I'm gonna reiterate that it's, it's nice to be part of this board and just to see the pride that we have in our community, the togetherness and just all the activities that are available. This exercise equipment that the mayor talked about actually is a great idea. When I was visiting my son in the L A area last year, he took me to a park where you could walk and they had a bunch of this stuff. And there were so many people, of course, it's a lot more people there, but I think it's a great idea because not everybody can afford that stuff. It gets you outdoors and so that's good. Um, and with that, being outdoors is kind of my favorite thing anyway. And, um, just wanted to mention a little side thing. When I was walking at Centennial last year and even the year before, and now that they're grooming that trail, it's wonderful, it's a great place to go. So, I just want to thank, thank you guys, again, pulling out another one.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeTyle. And I wanted to thank the workers from this summer, uh, for the hours that you put in. I didn't realize you put in extra hours. Uh, I met quite a few of them when I went, I tried to go to different parks this summer and I walked to some of them and then, one of them I got lost in, didn't know how to get out. But, uh, but I went over to, um, oh gosh, now I'm gonna forget which park it was. Uh, I think it was Rotary, we went, went for a walk and walked in and then I took a different way and I went, "Oh, this is fun, well, we'll just have to climb through the woods." But it was really a ball. Um, I'd like to thank the Watershed Forum for their involvement with the park. I'd like to thank Andrew for a really fun, um, park and, uh, pool trip that we took during the conference. Um, the city council, I'm really impressed with the city council, they, you have to deal with a lot of things. And you do it politely, responsibly, respectfully. And you, I can see all the work that you put in, you really are, um, community-oriented. And Mayor Whitney, I really appreciate you being here tonight and, uh, and thank you. Uh, I do have a question for Andrew. We have a vacant chair and that can be anybody in the city, is that correct?
Correct.
And, and nobody has applied for it.
I reached out to Ed or Eric to see if he was still interested and told him it was open. Um, I'm not sure whether he has, has applied or not.
Okay.
But other than that, as, whether he's applied or not, we do have the vacancy.
We do, okay.
Had one lady contact, but she lived outside the city, so.
So, how far down Funny River Road does it go, the city?
To the shop or the airport, end of the airport.
The airport, that's what I thought.
There's a, kind of enclave that's not, right, Paul?
Yeah, there's some of, um, when you get to the airport, some of the area off to the left is not inside the city. Um, so it's kind of in and out there for a little bit. And you're down to as far as the, the end of the runway, the, the public works.
Okay, because I was trying to think of people that direction and I thought of somebody out, um, oh, north a little bit, but I think it was too far. And then I'm, as far as down K Beach, we go, not all, we go, not all the way to the college. On the, on one side, oh, wait a minute, I should.
When you go, when you go to the college, down College Road, you turn left on Poppy and you're outside the city. If you hit a U-turn and come back on the same road, you're inside the city. So, it goes down the center of Poppy, down both sides of K Beach and then back this direction.
Thank you very much. Um, I have a lot of other things I'm thinking about, but it's been a long day and, uh, I have another meeting at eight o'clock in the morning. So, um, are there any other comments from anybody? No, seeing none, we will adjourn at six fifty-four P M. Thank you very much for being in attendance.
Thanks, Saul.